And. We're recording, let's do it.
Ashtruda County. It's your responsibility in November to come out and vote for some someone or individuals. Who you feel are going to progress your county, your schools and everything around that to better our community. In doing that, to educate yourself and to inform yourself, it's imperative to meet the people behind that. And to become acquainted with them so you can make the most informed decision. Tonight. Myself, Tom Roth, my co-host Anthony Aquendo of The Cut have Mr. Darius Williams here, a representative. Of the Ashtruda, future representative hopefully of the Ashtruda Area City Schools School Board. We're here to talk to him, get his uh input on a couple of things and delve a little bit deeper into who he is. Welcome in Darius, thank you for coming here and joining us on The Cut.
Thank you for having me. Thank you. No, of course.
So uh, so yeah, I mean, Tom just gave us a little introduction about, you know, you know, the importance of uh getting out, voting. Uh knowing your candidates and like you said, that's basically what you're here for. We want to get to know you, kind of what you stand for, uh what you represent, why you want to run. So tell us first of all, who you are, where you grew up, you know, and uh tell us whatever you want to tell us.
Okay, well, first things first, Darius Williams, uh born and raised in Ashtruda, I've been here my whole life. Uh one zero zero three West Forty Third Street, Ashtruda, Ohio, that's the house that I grew up in. Uh my grandma raised me, I've always been between my grandma and my dad, between those two, they helped mold me into the man that I am today. Since graduating, I went to military right out of high school, um and then. I worked at numerous jobs around, you know, I went into military as a National Guard, so I was part-time kind of thing as a cook. Uh worked in different restaurants around there, or Ashtruda, um and then one day ran into real estate. Not too much longer, ran into Sal, and now I'm doing the college thing, trying to work on my associate's degree. So that way I can be a real estate broker and that's my career path, uh working through that and then of course being a full-time dad to that beautiful little baby. I don't know, what else, what else do you want to know?
Uh your daughter, she's how old?
She's three.
Three years old?
Three.
Okay, one just, one daughter?
One daughter. Yeah, I'm not having no more until I'm married.
So it'd probably be fair to say, um, one of the motivations for you running for school board would be to help mold. Into a school district befitting of what you expect for your daughter.
One hundred percent, so when I look at the state of the school board, so it really stems back to twenty twenty-one when I ran the first time. Cause then I didn't really know, I ran just kind of like run for the school board, help kids, yeah, I want to do that. Um but then we do the, we go through the race, uh I came in dead last, I had like seven hundred votes. Uh but seven hundred votes for a first-time candidate, I think that's pretty good, um and was very, very grateful for every box that I got. I don't know where they came from.
Right.
Um but you look at Ashtruda Area City Schools. At that time, we were ranked five hundred seventy-five and that number is shared with like thirteen other, other schools. Um the lowest number in the state.
Wait, you said we were ranked what?
Five hundred seventy-five.
Out of how many?
Six hundred and seven, but those numbers can be shared between ten, fifteen schools.
So it's, so it essentially be a tie between, it could be.
I mean, and if I, if I say it, looking at it as a parent from the outside looking in, um, oh great, that school is tied for the bottom of the barrel. Um Jefferson is ranked two ninety-three on that same list, um Geneva, Conyote. And Madison, um no, not Madison, Geneva, Conyote, who am I missing? San John was not because they're a private school, uh so just like the public schools, they're regardless, they're all sub-three hundred, so.
Okay.
Jefferson's two ninety-three. Geneva and others are.
Let's go back a little bit, so you said Lakeside was five seventy-five.
Seventy-five. Yeah.
You said, who, who was five ninety-three?
Uh no, two ninety-three. Two ninety-three.
Oh, so they're.
Top three hundred school in the state, um and Geneva and Conyote aren't far behind it. Um I believe it was Conyote and Pamatuming, uh just like two years ago also had Fs on their school, on their report card, they now have Cs, but we still are an F. Uh the last time that we had a passing grade being a D was in twenty nineteen. Uh and everybody that we had that was in administration at that point, we now fired, so like any forward progress that we had going forward, we just. Pushed it right out the door, so like, what are we doing? So I don't know, so. You say all that to say, I look at the schools um at home, I do the best for my daughter to make sure I give her the best. Um and I wouldn't afford her that same thing when it comes into her education, uh me and her mom butt heads about it because for me. Number one, let's go, uh and the number one schools in the state are our west, so it's not like. Us as Ashtruda County doesn't have someone that we can look to, not that far down the street. And be like, okay, what are y'all doing? And let's see if we can take some of those things and instill them here, so that way we can establish some type of ground. Cause then if you just look at that kind of economic standpoint, if Ashtruda Area City Schools is sitting at where Jefferson is. Those are probably million-dollar properties, they're sitting right on top of the lake and it's not all about money, but you just kind of look at these things as. A realistic thing, Beechwood, Willoughby Hills, Chagrin Falls, that's where the number one schools in the state are and they don't have nearly as much. Tourist attraction that we have.
What is their revenue compared to ours?
Don't, don't, don't give me that question, don't give me that question, I, I can't throw the exact number at you if you're looking as far as schools. Um I, yeah, I'd have to dig into that one to give you the exact number, but.
Do you think that plays a big part in it?
Of course, but um what I can also say is we have a pretty significant amount of that money that we have in our district. Um and we get a more state money than any other school in this area. So it's not like we don't have the tools and the resources to be able to get these, get this school ahead. Three thousand students, a thousand IAPs, and if you continuously go to these board meetings.
What are IAPs?
Individualized education plans.
Yeah, so um.
This is what we talked about with Shannon, right?
Yes.
So uh you go to these meetings and this is never a topic of conversation. Um so you don't want this many IAPs, you don't want that many kids on like these educational plans. What are we doing to try and help these kids get off them? What are we doing for these kids? Well, I just found out yesterday after uh. Meet the candidate at night that apparently they've just been firing all the paraprofessionals, so the paraprofessionals are the ones that give these IAPs, or these kids with IAPs. Uh a one-on-one, so they have someone that can directly like, I'm gonna take you to math, I'm gonna help you get your work done, that kind of thing, so like.
Is it almost like a personal tutor almost, or like a mentor?
Don't make me say the exact word, but I'll, I would take it that way, yeah, okay, yeah, give me somebody that's gonna be with me throughout the day, that's gonna be, will help me.
Right.
So that way I can get my work done, I can be able to advance, I can learn this stuff. So I substitute taught um at Geneva and I substitute taught at Lakeside since uh my twenty twenty-one election. Uh first time was Geneva and then it was Lakeside and just the things that I've seen in the school, teachers need support.
Right.
By a long shot, the teachers need support, um and something has to change at the top because it needs to be like a streamlined line of uh. Communication from what a teacher may need to be able to go to the board and be able to come to like a collective like, okay, this is the things that will help me be able to get. These classes to get to a higher reading level, the board should be taking that information and then finding out what's in the community. Or what's in the state and we can get that money, and again, it's not like we're not getting the money from the state as it is now, that we can be making some. Major changes in the district, I just think we need forward-minded people to start making those changes and. Move the furniture around.
Alright, so I guess you're already jumping into it, um what, so you said. Well, I guess, let me just ask you, what are the biggest issues that you see in the district that you'd like to address? Or what are the biggest issues that parents um have come up to you and said, hey, look, this isn't working? Um if you're running on the, you know, if you're running, what is your plan for this? Like, what are you seeing the most of?
So I've seen a thing where the IAPs, um where. Just when I was getting my petition, some of the things I heard from parents about like how things went for their kids during graduation time versus. How it should have went, um. So the situation that was brought to me was that basically their kid's stuff was lost, they don't know where. All this information is, uh when he was ready to graduate, like, here you go, like here's your paperwork, but like. Couldn't really prove it, um it, 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 it was messy, uh.
Uh I mean, to, are you saying that like a, a young man or woman is ready to graduate, they need their transcripts, they need all this stuff to. Set themselves up for college or further in their education and the school system just lost the transcripts and everything?
The way, the way it was brought to me was like, yeah, like when it was time for them uh graduated and move forward, like the ball was just dropped, like there was, there was nothing there, so. Uh and don't let me, that, that is wild and it, it's something, that is something that would need to be dug in on.
Yeah.
Uh just so I can make sure I'm giving like an exact, as the exact truth, but the situation that came to me like, that's how it was dressed up and when. I said it yesterday, that, that school system just needs shaking and, and continue to be shaken and as you keep shaking that thing. Over the past four years, a lot of stuff has already fell out, um but it's, I don't think it's, I think there's more. Um it, it's just like the same families, the same relationships over a hundred years, taking care of the same school. Then when you see people that have been doing this for forty years and that's really like, that's, that their whole thing is like, well, I've been here for forty years and like, okay, well. What else?
Well, what worked forty years ago doesn't work today.
Exactly. And Mr. Rapu said it yesterday at the meeting, and I like, uh it might be time to pass it over to the new guard, um and. This ticket um that I'm on, this ballot, I'm sorry, versus the last ballot that I'm on, that it shaped a lot better. Um like, I think it might have been a blessing in disguise that I didn't win in the last election because I don't, we wouldn't have been, we wouldn't have been able to make. A forward change, it would have just been a couple of talking heads that are making a lot of noise and. I won't bring it up, I'll just say do research about what the board looks like right now and. Do the research behind what the board looks like right now and what certain people are going through, um. And then that, that, that'll answer a lot, uh because when you start shaking that tree and then they take your equipment away to do the tree shaking.
So, so, alright, so of course we want to do our own research, right, we should, everybody should do their own research and do their own diligence to make sure they've got the, the facts. But um elaborate a little bit on that, I mean, what do you, what do you mean, like as far as, you know, everybody's situations and what they're going through?
So i- 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 it gets shaky for me to say, cause I don't want to put myself in any like certain trouble, I don't think I would. Uh but there's just some legal things that are going on amongst the board, amongst board members, uh and. Since it's legal, I think that probably as far as I should say it, um sure, you know what I mean, without trying to like get myself anything, but um. A lot of it is public information.
So what can you tell us is public?
Well, I mean, then it just comes down to what question you want to answer or what question.
I mean, you said, you know, do, do research on what everybody's going through, but like you said, some of it's public, like what? I mean, throw us a bone, like what, what public information that you can provide us that'll kind of lead us in the right direction on what to look for?
It's been said out loud at board meetings.
Okay.
Um board members are sending other board members cease and desist letters.
Cease and desist what?
Cessence assist letters like.
For what?
You're not allowed to say that anymore, um.
Oh, so basically they're, they're trying to censor their speech essentially and.
A board member has already been voted censored by the rest of the board.
And is that just to suppress like an agenda or is that to?
Well, I, 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 so if you, so here, there's five seats on the board, um.
Now are all, now just, just real quick, not all five seats are being voted on.
No, so uh right now, that, that's a very good question, because there's something that, uh it causes a lot of confusion for people and I think should be broken down. So for the school board right now, there's two separate races.
Okay.
There's a. Two seats for the four-year.
Okay.
So that includes me, Sammy Torres. That's the dream ticket, um.
Is it?
Yeah, well, if you ask me, I'm biased. Me, Sammy Torres, uh Donald Rapus and William Scott Yat, those are four people running for the two-year seats.
Okay, okay.
Four people running for the two four-year seats.
Four people running.
Yeah, so there's two seats up, uh so if the board right now, Donald Rapus and Tim Fleming, their seats are up.
Okay.
Um so we're all running for those seats, um and then the other seat that's the second race is Tim Fleming. And Laura Jones, and if you ask me, that seat has a lot of weight to it and.
And how long is that, what, how long?
This seat is two years.
Okay.
So this seat is one of the seats that I ran for in twenty twenty-one, and let me break that ballot down to you. Um the winners were Deborah Barrickman, Bill Neme and Christine Seifert. Throughout that term, things came up and Christine Seifert stepped out.
I think I know what you were alluding to then earlier.
That's.
Well, that's, uh, some of that is, a lot of that is public, there were allegations of her in the past with uh. Maybe doing some inappropriate things with, yeah, young kids, right?
So her seat came, uh she had to step down, um and then that seat was open. That gives the board the opportunity to appoint someone to take that seat.
Okay.
Jones comes in.
And or Sam Torres.
Uh no, I'm saying currently.
Yeah.
Laura is, Laura is a.
I don't know if it was the uh, the final count, but um Laura Jones and Sam Torres both were in. The race for that appointed seat, um I believe Laura got it three-one and Sam got it two-two. I don't know how each one voted, but I believe since that's a vote that the board was making, that should be public information. Bitch, should be, you'd be able to dig that stuff up from the school. So um she got the appointment, um then she takes the seat and then. Couple of months later, um Lisa Newsome gets hired as the superintendent and here we are. Tim's been calling for her job since she got it, um he's never received a second, so he motions. And if you've never been to a board meeting. If we're having a discussion and I say I make a motion to whatever it is, all I need is someone to say is. Second.
Right.
Um you seconding it doesn't mean that whatever I have to say is going to be the law and that's it. Um it just says that a second, let me have this conversation, tell me no, now I can go away. But the board at this point like doesn't even like open up conversation, um they. Don't, I don't see how they could work well with anyone outside of the same people that they've been working with, um. I don't have uh the board president on Facebook, he has me blocked, uh but it was brought to my attention that he. Posted something saying something or other about me, Sam and Tim.
What's the name of the board president?
Bill Neme.
Bill Neme.
Um Deborah Barrickman is the vice president.
Uh how long has Bill Neme been serving on the school board? Is it one of the like the forty-year terms pretty much?
Well. This is where that board gets funny, cause uh when he first walked into that seat, he was appointed.
Okay.
Um and I believe the same for Deborah Barrickman, I believe the only two people that are on that board right now that have actually been elected. Let me take that back, so I don't want to show any disrespect. They were re-elected to retain their seat.
Okay.
But when they were first brought in, they were appointed, um so again, take that back. Um I believe Tim Fleming and Donald Rapus are the only ones that like got elected to sit in their seat. And were in that seat because they were actually elected to, um so you hear the nicknames about some of the people like. You don't just get like horrible nicknames for no reason, like. If some, some, if I was getting nicknames, these people were getting like, I, like I wonder when you show my face in town, but it's like.
Wait, who was getting nicknames?
Was it uh like Bill Neme getting like a nickname, kind of like, and it's like, obviously I'm thinking it's a derogatory. Some people could find it funny, some could find it derogatory, it's one of those things.
It's, yeah, one of the things we just kind of like define the person, um.
Yeah.
Not my definition, but.
Sure, but, but I think that anytime that you have a political discourse or anytime that you have, um you know, a contentious issue come up. It, it behooves people to maybe push a button or two with someone because then you can actually see the strength of their character, you can see their resolve, that kind of thing. And just kind of some of the things that I've seen, um. You know, from the Ashtruda, like um maybe the streams or some of the videos that maybe come out, you know what I mean, um it seems that a lot of. So, so I'm, I'm very uneducated when it comes to school board issues, okay, and. Uh I always thought that when someone went to a school board meeting, it was, it was full of decorum and coof and they would go in there. Because at the end of the day, it's ultimately for the betterment of the lives, to enrich the lives of the students, the teachers, the faculty and everything like that.
A hundred percent.
So maybe I live in Oz and I'm Dorothy here, you know what I mean?
I ain't gonna stop you, young man, but I think that right there is the issue because when you go to these board meetings, like these aren't the conversations. Are we about to pass this money so X, Y, and Z can do this? Are we about to pass this money so that way we can pay these people?
Sure, sure, sure.
I'm looking at it like this, um is if we're ever a failing district, like all that money stuff can stop. Um yeah, all the, all the voting for things in like a group can stop, we are a failing district, so the only thing that we. Anything that comes across this desk should be looked at with a fine, like a magnifying glass and gone through with a ti- fine-tooth comb. So we can make sure that we're making a good decision here because again, we're a failing district and we're a failing district and have been a failing district.
How long would you say we've been a failing district?
At least the past twenty years, because in the past twenty-two years, we've had one D.
Okay, so.
So this, when this, when the state report comes, state report card comes out, we're getting Fs every year.
So we graduated in two thousand and seven.
Oh yeah, we, we are definitely a part of that class, we're definitely a part of that group and I don't say like, I don't want to let all that come out and just to make it sound like Lakeside is a bad school. Cause it's not, because I graduated from Lakeside and I think in my own personal life that since I graduated, I've matured a lot. Between my junior, my senior year, some of the teachers I had and the situation I was doing, I was getting kicked out of school left and right, bro, I was one of those kids. Um there was a lot of teachers that like helped me like figure it out real quick before I went into the real world, like no, bro, like you can't kick that out of school right now, but like. Next year when you do this, you're not getting kicked out of somewhere, you're getting put in somewhere.
Yeah.
So certain teachers like that, they help you figure that out and I figured it out, so that takes me from being. My report cards were embarrassing to my senior year finally getting it together and now for the first time I'm hitting the honor roll and merit roll.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, so like, the teachers are there, we didn't come from a bad school, we just had a. Up here that would never get it right, so. How you want to say it?
The trickle-down wasn't allowing the full breadth of the.
I don't want to say there was ever really a trickle-down, I think it was more like a, this is what we have. And we have some really good people in here. And they're gonna do the best of what they can do for these kids. But here goes your ten thousand dollar raise.
Fantastic.
You feel me?
I feel what you're saying.
Yeah, so like, I don't know how long that's been going on, but it, I. I would, I heard, heard, do your own research, that um back when Ashbyland Harbor were the schools. We had the same board then, so like the same board covered both schools, so they dictated which way their monies went, um follow those names.
Wow, that's, that's really interesting too though. I mean, I mean, wouldn't you think, Anthony, if it's two, two different schools, they would have their own school board?
Unless they're in the same district.
They were in the same district.
Area City Schools.
Yeah, o- okay, so that makes sense then, yeah.
They were in the same district, uh but. You take that and turn that into, or take that back to those. How many board members up there right now were appointed into their seat and then re-elected?
Mm-hmm.
Um the other thing is where it comes into Ashbyland, it totals like. When these races come up, we have to start getting involved and I know like we're just now starting to get to the age where it's like, we're figuring out like I'm thirty. And I'm running for the school board, Sam's thirty-seven and he's running for the school board, um the next youngest after that, I believe is fifty-five. Uh and I believe the oldest is, don't let me say no name or no ages, cause I don't want to disrespect nobody, but uh.
Little bit older than fifty-seven then.
Uh yeah, I mean, it, it, it just looks like the same government that every government looks like. Um how many times do you see people our age sitting in a governmental seat? Um no, they usually look respectfully, our grandparents, yeah. That's fine, if they're in the seat and they can get the job done, but like there comes a point in time where, again, the old brass has to come in. And or the, yeah, the new brass comes in and the old brass, they'll play with your grandkids.
Sure, a- and, and, and we're talking about old brass versus new brass, so obviously with new brass coming in, there's new values, there's new belief systems. There's new um like a modus operandi for kind of um how a school system should be conducted. And so I would love it if, if you would give us maybe two or three. Main points from your platform, like, like, like what are two or three main, main uh. Hats that you're hang, that you're hanging, you know what I'm saying?
As far as.
So.
Like when it comes to being involved in the schools.
So.
Or as on the board.
O- on the board, uh like on the board, so, so, so how do you plan on shaking up maybe? Or imparting maybe some of a newer school um mindset into that?
Okay, um well, furniture needs to move, move, furniture needs to be moved around.
Okay.
And then we need to go find people outside of the same fifteen people that have been running the same, this community. Uh we need outside minds, um bringing in people that, bringing in people my age, bringing in people Sammy's age. We bring in our connections, the people that are already there respectfully generally don't have someone that's thirty years old that they can go grab and be like, hey. Do you know anybody that would be interested in, you know what I mean, so like, I feel like as if, as in younger minds coming in. Um we bring our thought process with it, um so hopefully that answers one part of the question.
It does.
Another part that, uh the other thing, if I'm hanging a hat, when it comes like what I want to see changed at the school is um. So when I substituted there, I seen a lot, um and I seen that the teachers need support, I also seen. What the students are allowed. I don't feel like there's any structure or discipline up there, uh I feel like they just let the kids come in, do what they want for eight hours a day and then send them home. Um and then that comes into, if that's what you're allowing, it shows why our schools are performing the way that they perform. They offer me a full-time job and if. I was a licensed teacher. And what was said to me, I won't repeat it, I want to, but uh what was said to me by that principal. About accepting this full-time job. I'd never turn, I'd, I'd, I'd run away from this district and I would never look back, um and then seeing that from like the inside out. It didn't take long for me to go home and tell Haley that like, uh. Uh we, we might want to start opening up the conversation about what school she goes to, um the elementary, I know. I remember Miss Craft, Miss Craft never played around and when I was in that school, I could tell that Miss Craft still had her hold on that school because like them kids weren't playing around. If they were, once they got around that corner where they knew Miss Craft was at, it cut out, um we need some of that back in the schools. Uh and it shows why that same school, the reading, writing, and the math are going up, um same thing in the uh grade level below that. Uh cause in the elementaries, everything is trending upwards. As soon as you hit the junior high and the high school, it plummets, um and when I was there, I can see why. So discipline and structure needs to be established in there somewhere, so that way. The teachers feel like they can do their jobs. Because without. Is it like, i- 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 it's hard to answer that, like i- i- it's loaded, uh it's loaded, because. I'm a substitute teacher who's telling you like, I don't know if I'm gonna come back tomorrow and I don't know if I'm gonna like. That, that line that calls my phone and offer me jobs, like I might block it, um. I can come back over and over and over again for these kids and I don't mind to because a lot of these kids and a lot of their parents I know, so like I'm. And for once in their life, they finally see some teacher at that school that looks like them, um. There's not any of them up, any of them there, and yeah, it goes into money, but uh we can find teachers in Ashbyland County because I found myself. And now I know Jesse Brazier's teaching right now too, um so it's not like we can't get the people in there, uh farm the community. Discipline instructed, it takes a village, so. With me, more of Ashbyland has to come in and not everybody has to run for the board, um some go teach, some go drive bus, some go work in the kitchen, whatever, like. When I was in school, there was a lady from my church that worked in the cafeteria, so if I'm in the cafeteria acting crazy. I'm gonna tell Jewel. That's it.
At church is gonna have a conversation is gonna be.
Yeah. And then it's just that, that look and it, oh, you just told her.
Yep.
I know that, and that, that plays effect because I did it, aren't you, and your parents own. You could see it in the kid's face like, oh, all that tough stuff, I was just talking about that, that ain't it no more, he knows exactly who I am. After that, like the issues with that kid went out, yeah, pain in the butt, whatever, but like, it don't take long to bring him back to reality, like you, you know, I know better. And ain't that your parent on Facebook right there, that's him, ain't it? Yeah, go sit down.
So uh, so where does, so the. So, uh, so where does, so the school board comes into play because they're the one who appoint the, uh, superintendents, principals as well, correct? Or does the superintendent hire the principals?
No, I don't know. The superintendent is responsible for the curriculum. So really, once the board puts a superintendent in, once the board puts the superintendent in place, the board should be able to walk away and let the superintendent like handle that curriculum and then pass that down throughout the administration. Um, the board should really just be like getting the public's idea or hearing from the public, bringing that to the school, and then getting these things implemented so that way we can get these issues fixed. That's really what the board should be doing, you know, handling the monies and things of that nature.
Now, when you say handling the money, um, I heard rumblings in the past that, um, Lakeside was, had been doing this or was toying with the idea of doing this, being a pay to play sports. Is that not the case now or?
Don't hold me to that one. I'd have to dig into that one a little bit, but I do remember vaguely like towards my junior, senior year, it being pay to play. I don't know if it is now.
I don't believe it is, um, but, but my biggest thing is looking at, obviously education's super important. I mean, as someone, I, I used to be a teacher. I was like, I was kindergarten teacher for years. Uh, I loved that job. Uh, there's no money in it. Um, and, but the other thing is, I mean, let's not kid ourselves, a lot of community involvement comes from athletics. Right? Um, turning out for football games, turning out for basketball games. Now, when we were in high school, we had Olajuwon Cooper. I mean, we had special athletes at that time, right? And, and it was very good to see on Friday nights, going out there and seeing that integration of, Harbor and Ashbula coming together and forming that Lakeside. First couple of Lakeside teams and then Brandon Hannah, you know, uh, our junior and senior year being the quarterback and, maybe not producing like ten win seasons, but making a great product on the field. And now it seems like that's absent. It's see, even though Lakeside's been to the playoffs, I mean, let's not kid ourselves, Lakeside has, um, benefited from a restructured playoff system where pretty much everyone can make it. Um, as long as you hit a certain number of criteria, they aren't that hard to hit. Um, but, um, is there ever an instance where the school board plays an active role in maybe improving the athletics in the area?
Well, I think they rely, I know there's, uh, I know they have certain amount of monies that are set aside for athletics every year. Uh, and I know they rely heavily on boosters as well. Do their thing, um, public participation. I, that's another one of the things that I gotta get in there and I gotta get my hands on the information so I can dig into it. Cause I think there's a lot of information that I'm just not going to be privy to because I'm not in that seat, you know what I mean? That, 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 that in itself opens up another can of worms on what's going on up there.
See, because it's just wild to me that like Lakeside, we are such a socially, culturally, and economically diverse, area, we should be, we should be undefeated every year.
Yeah, I would say the same, but I think that also goes into a thing of like our open enrollment and the fact that we're losing kids because parents are, taking like just snatching their kids at Ashville area city schools. Um, and, again, if I'm looking at it from a parent on the outside and looking in, like I really can't blame you. Cause again, like when I, when I was teaching, it didn't take long after, we might want to have this conversation about what school she goes to.
So here's, um, has, I presume it's already been at least looked into what, compared to those other schools, Jefferson, uh, Conia, the ones that are, you know, fall, you know, have, have a higher ranking than three hundred. They're within the top three hundred. What does their pay for their teachers look like compared to Ashville City Schools?
Uh, I don't think there's really like a major pay jump between Ashville area, Ashville County Schools until you hit, like, once you go into like the Lake Counties, that's when you start losing the monies, uh, because their budget's a lot, a lot, a lot bigger.
Well, they're a lot, they're a lot more populated. But as far as Ashville County Schools, where does Lakeside rank?
Well, I'll, when I was substituting Lakeside, um, paid more than every other school.
Lakeside paid the most. So it's not a money issue. So the teachers are getting, so the teachers are, are getting paid.
I would say respectfully so. Don't, you know, I mean, like, what you think is a lot of money, well, I think, don't, you know, I mean, don't let me judge.
Right, I mean, that's, that's subjective. But, uh, but as far as the, the other schools in the district or in the county, I should say.
I don't think money's the issue. Uh, when I taught at Geneva, I knew that there was money being left on the table, quote unquote. Um, respectfully so because I was teaching there versus teaching at Lakeside.
Right, well, I, I'm pretty sure Geneva probably has one of the highest paid teacher salaries in probably the state. I know there's been a big, uh, there's been a big issue with that over the past couple of years, but, um, but I want to stick to Ashbula area city schools. But, um, so if teachers getting paid are not the issue, um, and, so you, one thing you mentioned is it comes down to discipline and structure. What could you, what would you like to see different to instill discipline and structure?
Whether it's me, um, or anybody, uh, I'm not gonna say just go in there and turn it into a military school. Um, but the number one schools in the state are hour west. And I don't see why it would be a tough phone call just to call out there and say, so I see you guys are doing well. What is it? What are you guys doing? What do you have out there that, what are you doing, um, to keep kids engaged in education? Um, I don't think there's going to be an issue with busing. I don't think there's going to be an issue with money. And I think if there's a thing where, we start engaging the students that's in the school and getting them out of the classroom because not every kid is going to learn by book and, the mess that's in it. Um, if we start engaging these kids in their education, then maybe they start engaging in their education versus just, what I seen when I was up there, the, it didn't take long for me to lose the classroom. Couple of classes a day, um, they come in, I know we can get our bookwork done. And that's all I was really given to like, hey, here's this book, go over the work with them. That's it. Um, so, what engagement is that? So how do you keep these kids engaged in learning? If all you're gonna tell them was just, hey, take this book and read these three pages and then do those five questions at the end of it. Which gets these kids up out of here, um, use these buses that we're spending all this money on, uh, get some people, get the bus drivers in here to like, take these kids out, uh, because I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't think Lakeside has a money issue at all. I think they just don't want to, address the issues that are on the table. If I'm looking at it from the outside, looking in, they are not addressing the issues. That should really be addressed and that's those kids. You take care of those kids, they will take care of everything else.
So, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but one thing you mentioned when you were a substitute, basically you had like a small little project for them. And then it was kind of like, after that, there wasn't really nothing to keep them engaged. So, uh, would it be fair to have a teacher have a curriculum set up maybe for the next two weeks and?
So when they gave me this, they, when they gave me that position, like they didn't even give me a curriculum.
They didn't, they didn't give you any guidelines, basically.
He gave me the book and told me like, just go over this.
Go over this.
It's not a, it's not a, it's not a, uh, bro, it like, it, it, it really is really like sick to hear, like, it's not a greatest subject or it's not a tested subject. So if they fail, just give them a D. They don't do their work, just give them a D. Can't fail them. It's not fair to them because they haven't had a teacher.
So it's basically just to occupy their time.
A hundred percent. So like, once they know that, what, what, whoa, what are we, what are we talking about?
And see, that's such a disservice to the students because, I mean, the, the entire point of an education system is not just to teach the student and have them do the work. It's to nurture that love for wanting more. Education isn't just regurgitating what you read, in a book and then putting it on a paper. Education is learning about it, applying it, and then finding other areas to apply that to in, in your life.
When, when I was in there, like that's all, that's, that's what I really had to turn that class into was like, listen, I know this curriculum ain't about to give you nothing. Uh, this is basically like a mythology class. What is a myth? It's something that's not real. I'm glad you know that. Uh, so now that we know that, what this book says don't really make too much of a difference. But what I need you to do for me, so I know you're getting something out of this, is we gonna read this together? That was pulling teeth. Um, and then once we read this, I'll give you the answer. All I need you to do is take this answer, give it back to me and not my words. So I know that you're taking the information in and you're giving it back to me with, in the best way that you know how, without saying the same thing that I just said. That's really the best thing they had for it. And there was kids in there that I, I got them. You know what I mean? I pulled them in. I had the same thing happen to Geneva where I find those kids that, he's going to be a pain in your butt, Mr. Williams. Don't worry about it. I got him. I'm not really worried about the kid. You just gotta be able to engage the kid and like I said, take this book. Like I planned on going to school to get my broker's license and then going back to school for education, but like after that conversation, it, that conversation like, this, that, that, the best way for me to help isn't going to be in the classroom. Um, it will be up here. So that way, individuals with that mindset, nah, not, nah, nah.
Let me, let me ask you. So within the last, um, I don't know. You said you've been, you ran two years ago, um, and then, since then, let's say since you ran or since your campaign, your last campaign, you said you've been to several board meetings. Um, what are some things, resolutions that were passed that you didn't necessarily agree with that you think, uh, maybe should have went the other way?
The biggest one that passed that still sits with me is they lowered the, uh, basically lowered the playables for playing sports. The GPA has always been two point O, whatever. They lowered it to one point five. Um, that right there was the biggest, just push them through that, um, it, that, that stuck with me more than anything else. Um,
Now, who brought that up? How did that become an issue? Was it a coach that did that?
I believe it was something, I think it was like a state thing that they were beginning to allow. And then it was going to be a thing where the board has the decision to make the decision if they were going to allow it to happen.
How did that pass? How many? What was the, what was the votes?
Well, that goes into a thing because, uh, they don't vote these things one by one. So watch this. We're gonna allow the GPA for sports to be one point five. In that same packet, they might have a union thing on there. Are we gonna pay the union so they continue staying on board? Now, that wasn't the, you know what I mean? But that, that's how these things are being voted through. So like, I might have a group of ten things. Nine of them might be trash, but I need that one thing to pass. And that one thing, oh, whoop, you gotta send it through. I'm not a proponent of like that school being a slaughter.
So how do you change that? Let's say that came up on, let's say that came up for a vote.
The first thing like, comes to our minutes, there is no group. There is no group voting for anything. Everything that come across this desk is, needs to be, magnifying glass, fine tooth comb. And if it takes an hour and a half or two hours to get through a board meeting, so be it. We're a failing district and until we can get out of failing, if I'm behind in a class, I gotta go back and look at what I was doing back there to get my grade up. We gotta go start.
So how does that, so essentially that if, um, again, just a hypothetical, that's that, that same package that includes a union pay, um, also includes a one point five for the GPA for, to play in sports. Uh, so the, the best way to, to kind of separate those would be for the majority to pass it as a no vote. And then it would have to be relooked, renegotiated, and then brought back for a second vote, correct?
Yeah, but that, that's where it could be dumb, come dangerous because depending what those other things in that, that group are, there might not be time for.
A no vote.
You know what I mean? So like, we might have to get this through. And I don't know, I don't know if the board's been in that pressure packed situation. Um, but I'm assuming as a failing district, every vote that you make is a pressure packed, is every vote, no matter the district is going to be pressure packed. Um, but especially, I don't think, okay, I'll say this. I think as a failing district, there's not enough eyes on that failing district to push them, to get it together. And I think that's why it's easy enough to, we just failed again. It's ten thousand dollars. You know what I mean? That's, that's why I think that's easy enough to do that because like, if no one's going to come ask some questions on why we've been failing for the past twenty years, why does it really matter? Well, we just got fifty thousand dollars in state money, so, uh,
So people are letting you do it.
I, I said at the meet the candidate night, even if I don't get elected, just go to the meetings and whoever's up there, apply pressure. And keep applying pressure and keep applying pressure and shake the tree and shake the tree and shake the tree. So all the crap can come out and whatever questions you got have to be answered, like, the board participate, the public participation from the board, there's basically like a, it's like when you get married, they read that thing to you, you know what I mean? Uh, they basically read this thing to you before they start public participation. You can't do this. You can't do this. You can't address this like this. You can't address this like this. You can't talk about any specific individual. And I understand there's certain things that need to be protected. I understand why they started doing it, uh, because, when that, when Seaver, before Seaver stepped down, it, it got crazy at those board meetings. Like there's, groups and groups and groups and groves of people coming up to the board, um, telling like, I have something I want to say, but public participation is only ten minutes, right? Uh, so there was one meeting, here's another.
Public participation per person is ten minutes or as a whole?
Oh, so, um, there's a lot of people, this, this is another board meeting that just kind of stuck with me. Um, all these people are lining up because they have something to say. And they basically came to a point where they're like, well, we're gonna take a vote to see if the board will stay here to continue to listen to the public. And I'm looking at them like, hold on, wait a minute. So the people that put you in that seat, you're gonna tell them that you gotta vote to see if you have time for it. And then guess what happened? Uh, Tim, they said it in a, I'm not a politician and I never have been, so I don't know how to like just say some stuff to you and like, you know what I mean? Uh, so they said it in a way where it was like, so we're gonna do this and if it doesn't pass, then the board meeting is gonna end. And if you didn't really understand what was being said, it would have went right over your head and you just would have said, okay, and waited for it. But Tim was like, so hold on, let me just break that down real quick. Let me tell you what that means. Basically what the board just said was, they hear you that y'all got something that y'all want to say, but they saying they don't got time to sit here and listen to it. So they gonna vote real quick. And if we don't get a three, two vote to say, yeah, we'll sit here and listen, they gonna adjourn the meeting. Do you think they passed? No, they voted on, it was four, one or whatever like it usually is, they adjourned the meeting. And all those people that standing up there to let you know they got something to say, you basically just told them screw your vote and screw what you gotta say. Uh, I'm going home and, I know that was a pressure packed situation.
Are these boards, um, I know at one point they were, they were streamed on Facebook. Are they still streamed?
They were streamed at one point in time, but in that, in that, in that same breath. Uh, they used to do them in a, a large group instruction room where they had it set up where everybody has a microphone. And if you're streaming, you can stream and you'll be able to get the audio. But then, public participation started getting to where it was. They moved the meeting across the hall into the library to where like you can't even do that anymore. Uh, and then they attempted to, it never passed. They attempted to move the meetings to ten o'clock in the morning. So then like during the summer, so like,
I did see that.
What are you doing? Like, bro, I have to work, uh, and you know I have to work. Why would you do this kind of meeting at this early in the morning where people can't even come? So like, don't, don't, don't tell me I have a participation of time and then like I can't even get to it. Uh, that, we need a board that the public can go to. Um, the public needs to go to the board. Uh, for whatever situation you have, be it whether your kid's not getting what you think they deserve, whether you think your kid's being picked on or whatever it is, you need to have a board that you can go to and tell them that these things are right and I need help. And I don't think you really have that opportunity with this board. And what I did see from the board, they just end up getting bullied. I won't dive into it because I was told to that conversation in a confidence. But yeah, bullies, bullies. Been bullies.
So, um, Tom, do you have anything? I had something on the front of my mind, but I just forgot. You have any questions?
So, so we talk about bullies on the school where we talk about, um, people, uh, wanting, letting these people be heard, letting the community be heard because at the end of the day, the taxpayers doing quite a bit for this school system.
That, that's it. Outside of the taxpayer, the people that work at the school, it's taxpayer, people that work at the school, and that's the will to the school.
So why are, why are, or why do you think that, information is being suppressed in a way? That's what I'm gathering.
There's no transparency with that board.
There's no transparency. So why, what, what will, what is your hope and your approach to that to make it more transparent? What, like, what would you want to do?
To get up there and just tell you what's going on. And if you don't want to know what it is, uh, they're starting to get pretty good into it. So I don't want to show any disrespect to that. Uh, but now that, now that we're starting to get into it, not just what I want you to see. Um, even if it's gonna hurt me to tell you that I broke your glass vase, I need to tell you that I broke your burst, your glass vase. So if something's coming on at the school and it's not in the, hey, parents, um, this just came up and this is where we're at. This was going on and this is what we're trying to, this is how we're trying to deal with it. So transparency, get people up there that you can come to. Have an open door policy and it legitimately be an open door. Not, uh, I'm gonna open the door and then we turn around.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm like. The biggest thing is, is garnering a, and fostering a community of trust, respect, transparency. And segueing that into not just more success from the students, but also more involvement from the parents. I mean.
It take, it, it, it can't just be.
It can't just be a one-way street.
Yeah, it can't just be the school. It has to be the parents as well. Um, and that, that's gonna be, that's another thing where it comes into it. So like. Love these kids up, show these parents that you doing everything at these schools to love these kids up. And when these parents start saying, hey, every time he come home, he gotta smile, whatever y'all doing up there, keep doing it. And then when you're doing these things, tell the community what you're doing and then invite the community in. Hey, I don't know, maybe we're just gonna throw. Weekend something at the school just so you can come up here, be in the school, talk to your teachers. Get it, understand what's going on and what, what you can do to help the teacher and not always what the teacher can do to help you. Uh, it's, it's gotta be a thing. I'm doing this because I wanna see a better school for my daughter.
Yeah.
And without someone saying, I'll do it, then it just continues to be the same thing over and over and over again. So me and Sammy have to do it and then. Two other people gotta do it behind us. And when those two bring, if me and Sammy start and we can bring five and the next five bring twenty. In no time flat.
Bring five or twenty what?
More people.
Like parents, you're saying the board meetings.
Or board meetings or just anything to just be involved in the school. Cuz again, like. I can get elected to the board and it could, so it's like, say me and my dream team, we all get elected to the board and we do all these amazing things. We still need the parent. We still need the parent cuz it's your kid and you gotta buy into your kid's education just like you want your kid to buy into his education.
That was gonna be a question I had. Um, so. Nowadays, back when we were younger, we didn't have all these tools where parents could go on and see, uh, if a student was missing homework assignments. See live, real time what their grades are, um, kind of just their progress throughout the year. How much responsibility do you see or lack, I should say, lack of accountability from these parents, um, when it comes to their kids and their grades? Because I know my son, my son does not go to Ashbilla area city schools. I graduated from Lakeside, but I chose to put my son somewhere else because of a. Basically because of what you've been talking about, right? Um, so. I, I go on, or my wife goes on frequently and we check our son's grades, check his homework assignments, see if he has anything missing. See if he failed anything, um, and then we address it at home. So, all right, you're missing this assignment, why are you missing it? You need to get it done, um, and we ensure that he has it done. Or if he failed something, all right, why did you fail it? Do you not understand it? So how?
So we can self-coach.
Right, so I mean, as far as the parents holding their, their kids accountable, um, there. Maybe I'm wrong, but it seems like there's a lack of accountability.
So that, that might be, um, but don't let me, don't let me put a direct answer on that because. With everything that we have at Lakeside, um, we got a lot of other things too, um, and. As blessed as, I say this respectfully, but as blessed as our kids might be to be able to come home to mom and dad, not everybody, not every kid has that.
Right, no, I understand.
So. That might only be a percentage of the kids, but, um, that also goes into what we do at the school. Uh, when it comes to loving that kid up and finding out that answer that if. When Darius goes home, is there someone there that Darius is talking to, he could sit down and do this work with, or? Do I as a teacher need to recognize something and see what tool that I can get set for this kid in the school so that way? He can get what he needs. So IAP, Sammy says this a lot, um, and I'm stealing it from him. An IAP is a individual. Uh, education.
Education plan.
Plan, yeah. Uh, so. What does that, what is that individual, what does that individual need? Uh, I think that needs to be looked at, um, but.
So, all right, so, all right.
Let me give this one to you.
Okay, go ahead.
It, it kind of ties into it. Um, what does that individual need? And then yesterday I hear that. They're firing the parapros that give these IAPs what they need left and right.
What are parapros? They're the individual mentor, basically.
In a sense, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they might have different job titles that go along with that, but the, under, under the conversation I got yesterday, the kids that need the IAPs. A third of our kids at that school have an IAP, the people that were there for them, they're firing them left and right, just letting them go out the door.
Let me ask you a question because.
On their own right.
Maybe I, maybe I didn't understand or misheard you earlier, but it sounded like you weren't in favor of an IAP. You said that.
It's, it's, it's not so much about being in favor of it, um. But to have a third of your students on an IAP. That's something to look at.
So that, I guess that comes down to the question is, so if a third of them are like, are a third of the, the kids. Students having troubles at home where they don't have somebody who can sit there and mentor them.
Say that it's on, it's on an individual thing, you know what I mean? Like, I don't have, I don't have access to that information, so it's gonna be hard for me, some, hard question for me to answer. Um, but I say again, like, it's an individual thing. So it's not like we don't have the resources because with every IAP. Comes federal money. So since we're getting federal money for all these. Individuals, why are we not investing that money into them? And that again comes into when you go to all these board meetings, IAPs is never in the minutes. There's not, nothing that ever gets brought up in discussion. But again, what is? It's ten thousand dollars.
Do the special education students ever get anything like, uh, so, so my son. My son is developmentally disabled, uh, is in a wheelchair, can't walk, can't talk. He's on multiple IAPs and those are to track his progress. Uh, hey. We want Wyatt to be able to grab this. We want Wyatt to be able to look at this and recognize these certain things and. Um, you know, I thank God for those IAPs because. Without them, they're not, these paraprofessionals aren't working towards tangible goals for him. And, and it's. And I don't send my son to Ashbilla area city schools because. In my opinion, from what I saw. There is a lack of support for children with special needs, um.
That's not the first time I've heard that.
And.
It's not the first time I seen it either.
So, so what can, because special needs students make up a good portion. Of what a school is, right? So how do we, how do we fire these paraprof, it, how do we fire these paraprofessionals? Bring new ones on and have a revolving door because that's not fair to the student because I know for a fact if my son. Was with a different paraprofessional every other month.
Day, nothing.
And that's disgusting.
Especially when like, it, again, it's an individual. So if that individual needs something like if that. If Darius is on an IAP and. Ms. Kloski is his math teacher and he needs to see Ms. Kloski for his math, like what, why, why are we stopping him from that?
Exactly.
Let him go over there. Let him get that figured out. Or if he can't go right now, explain that, hey, not right now, but let me get it worked out. That's why I say I'll make a phone call and get you down there in the next twenty minutes. It's not like these things like. These things, this, I don't think that these things are rocket science. I think with a lot of. The same things you might run into a lot of, a lot of hurdles, um, but like, it's not like these things can't be worked out.
I wanna break this down real quick. So.
Break it down, baby.
Who is in charge of hiring and firing?
Board.
The paraprofessionals.
Hiring, firing is the board. Um, if there's anyone outside of hiring and firing, um.
For the paraprofessionals.
The board.
Okay.
The board.
So, so.
When I went in, they had, I had to do my application, go through HR, do all that good things. I believe the superintendent might get a peek at it.
So, AACs, AACs board has made the decision to fire several paraprofessionals.
This brought to my attention yesterday, yeah.
Okay, so the students who are on an IAP with a paraprofessional, are they being handed off to another paraprofessional who is now. Um, managing multiple students on IAP. Or are they just being reintroduced back into the general public classroom?
That's something I gotta dig on, but if I'm going off of like what I seen when I was. Yeah, they got rooms for, uh, yeah, you, you, so the class that I was teaching across from, there was a room. Um, I don't know if there were IAPs, but there was a room where, and then there was a room right next door. So that, yeah, uh, you might have two teachers in a room to. Eight or nine, but I think a lot of our behavior, uh, IAPs might be behaviors too. Um, so it, like I said, it, not every IAP is a bad thing, behavior just being like.
So now that those I, those paraprofessionals are, are, you know, have been relieved of their duties, um, where does the money go?
Just sign off a raise. If you ask me, like, yeah, it sounds funny to say it, but like. If I look at it. Who's getting raises? Where is this money going? They just bought a bunch of new buses. Um, they're working on building a bus garage. Uh, I believe there's something going on with, with the mother of sorrow's building as well. So it's not like there're things that. Some, yeah, see, like.
So, so the plight of the students that are on these individualized education plans, um. Their plight of losing someone that they trust is directly benefiting someone else's pocket, essentially.
I wouldn't color it any other way.
Okay. Shame on you, Lakeside.
Yeah, it's, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't color it any other way, um. Cause I'm, I'm gonna say it again. I'm quoting, hundreds of meetings I've been to. An IAP has not been brought up on a single board meeting. So like, what are we doing? Uh, let me quote another one. When was one IAP too many? Now you're gonna have them, you know what I mean? Like, they're gonna be there, it's gonna be a part of it. Um, but. Why do we have a thousand? What are we doing to get to a thousand? And what are we doing to get that number reduced?
Uh, could, you said for each IAP comes fu- federal money. Could that be a tactic by the district to, uh, acquire more money?
Could be. Uh, every day at ten o'clock, they get a check from the state. Every day at ten o'clock.
The district does.
Yeah, every district, every district in the world. About ten o'clock, they get a phone call from the state. Uh, here you go, buddy. And that's just the attendance money, you know what I mean? Um, a lot of money is lost at the same time when it comes to open enrollment. Because when open enrollment happens and kids are leaving the district and they're open rolling to another one, the school has to cut that school a check for that kid. Uh, so I mean. The, there's a lot of things to look at when it comes to like the monies, um, because. How many different, and you expect, like any, any, anything you expect there to be loss, right? Um, but. We have a lot of loss and then we have a lot. We have the most federal money in, in, in this county and we're the lowest ranking school. So what are we doing with that money? And.
It sounds like there's a pretty good correlation there between IAPs. I mean, if we. Ashbilla has the most kids on IAP per, you know.
Three thousand student, one thousand IAPs.
So, a third of them are on IAPs. And what are the, uh, what are the other schools?
Don't, don't let me give you an answer on that cuz I, I'm, I'm looking at Ashbilla, like, how, how you're sitting through it cuz my daughter's supposed to be at.
Right, okay, but just to, to, uh, kinda impeach you on that. You said that.
Kicking me out?
No, no, not, not kick you out, impeach you on that. So something you mentioned earlier was, we need to look at schools. That are outside of Ashbilla or beyond, or even within our district if they're doing something better. And we need to figure out what they're doing to make our school better, maybe incorporate some of their, their tactics or standards or whatever they're doing, right? So I think it would be important for you to know what other schools in the county, uh, as far as where we rank.
Numbers look like.
Right.
Fair, yeah, hundred percent. So like when I look at what they rank, um, my state numbers.
I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm talking about state numbers, but I mean, we're talking about IAPs right now, so.
IAPs doesn't even have versus Lakeside.
And, and then where do they rank, right? So I think that's, uh, I think that's something that.
No, yeah, that, that's real.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a very good point. And I, and I take that one. Take that one. I can't look into that cuz I shouldn't. If I shouldn't know, it's something to know.
Right.
You know what I mean? So then that way we can get a. I can find a average.
Yeah, I would say.
You know what I mean?
Me, I mean, I, I'm not running for school board, but if I were to look into it, I would look at, all right, what is a percentage of our school that's on an IAP? What, how much money are we getting per, you know? How much are we, how much money are we getting?
Right.
For these amount of kids, what is it, you know, what is the ratio proportionally, you know, what, what does each student bring in? Um, and then obviously what are, what is the outcome? The, the end result, are we doing? Are these, are we seeing a, a lower trend of students going on IAPs compared to these other schools? Are we trending up above them? Um, I think it's very, like you, like you said, we gotta look at. Other schools and maybe emulate some of their, their processes. So, um. Somebody just walking, sound like you're right. Um, so yeah, I think it's, I think it's important to, to. To have not a, not a microscope, but maybe a wider, maybe a wider lens.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Good. I've, I've been, um. I've been very focused.
Right.
Ashbilla area city schools, um, cuz again, like, I don't intend to see my daughter moving out the district. Um, cuz I'm building my career here, um, and it's been going pretty well. I'm in college here, uh, like this is where we're from, you know what I mean? Trying to build this, I'm trying to build me up, um. But I got a little girl coming behind me too, you know what I mean? So I'm trying to build things up for her too and just. It, it, it's gotta look right. Like it, it has to make sense. It has to make sense. And a lot of people say like, oh, you can't really make that, it seems like. How do you? Is it insanity? Expect something different from the same thing you've been getting? Uh, is it? I don't know, man. It, it, it's, it's hard to look at that district, um, right now with like all the information. And things that I've learned since I picked this thing up. And. One standby. Cuz I always take it back to like the. Economic thing of it. If Ashbilla area city schools and all the other city schools in Ashbilla county are sub-three hundred. What does it look like out here? How many more businesses do we get out here?
So really the only way to change thing is to have a majority on the board, right? So your dream team, you, Sammy Torres and Tim Fleming.
One hundred percent.
Right? To, and you've mentioned this on your videos, um, Tim Fleming, like you said, you can paint him with, uh.
Numerous brushes.
Numerous brushes, right? And he is definitely one to stir the pot. Um. Now, there was just an article released by the Star Beacon a couple days ago where on the last board meeting within one minute of the, the board meeting even beginning.
It was a seven minute board meeting. I got there six oh three, it was done at second, six oh seven.
Right, so, um. And then there were.
You know what? He ain't just get to that. That meeting didn't just end in seven minutes because Tim Fleming, it, no.
No, that's not where I'm going with this. Uh, where I'm going with this is, um, so. As a board member, you represent the public.
Of course.
Right? That is, that is your job, um. Now, when the public, you're working for the public, right? So your dream team, same tours, yourself, Tim Fleming. When you have one person on your team who is, uh, maybe. Even whether, whether he received it first or not, is calling names, uh, to the people who are supposed to vote for him. Who he's expected to vote for him. Um, now you don't seem like the type of person that's gonna sit there and yell back at, at the public. At a, at a board meeting, but. When you see stuff like that and you're co-signing for that person. How do you think people take you, right? So if you're co-signing for him, how does that? Light shine on you?
Be a double edged sword.
Right.
Can be a double edged sword.
Do you think he's hurting you in that aspect?
I've had that question asked me a lot, um. He might be. Um, but I think. When we look at the state of the schools and we look at the things that he's been doing over the past couple of years. There's a reason why he gets the backlash that he does. It's not like he's yelling and screaming a lie. It's just one thing he ain't never been called as a liar. He's telling him to shut up.
Why does he want the superintendent fired? And I, I don't expect you to speak for him exactly, but I'm sure you're probably privy to some of it since you've been to so many board meetings because he's. He's, he's, he's made a motion to fire the superintendent since she's been hired. At every meeting. What is his big?
So the word nepotism gets brought up a lot. I won't say that's what it is. Um, but I do know that when she interviewed. She was told no numerous times. Now, Tim Fleming was originally one that was like, well, if we gonna bring somebody in, why don't we get her? But.
So he endorsed her first.
Yeah, um. But the rest of the board said no. That's not our, that's not our person. Her first application, they told her no. And. An anonymous letter came in, it wasn't anonymous, uh, but a letter came in and told the board that you should rethink that. And then her name pops back up on the list. Uh, but a letter came in and told the board that you should rethink that. And then her name pops back up on the list. Um. Why does he want her gone? She's been sending him cease and desist letters. So let's look at it like this. If I'm the.
Pause, right there, right there. Alright, so he endorsed her initially. Why the change of heart?
Because what they, what, what, see, this board will make decisions without Tim. And how this, how the, how this whole thing worked was, yeah, we're, we're looking at her. And we got this other guy that we're bringing in today that we already hired. What do you mean? I just endorsed her. I didn't even think we were to, well, yeah, we already hired him. So, um. Rubisic. When Rubisic came in, he was already hired.
And what is his position?
Interim superintendent.
Oh, so he was.
Because I believe it was Dr. Potts, who was our last superintendent, and he stepped down. Um. We already had an assistant superintendent in place. Her name is Dr. Washington. Um, I don't wanna disrespect her credentials, but I wanna say she has a doctorate degree. Um, and she's already our assistant. So if you ask me, I just look at it like this. If the president is no longer there, who do you put in the place? It should be the assistant, because who's the closest person? They, no, they kept her in that position. Um. Kept her at the assistant, they brought in interim. As this Harvard. As she has a doctorate. So I don't remember what college she went to, but as she's going through this application process with Lisa Newsom, um, and several others, um. Passing her along just the same way as they're passing Lisa Newsom along. And then at the end of it, it comes down to our assistant superintendent. And Lisa Newsom. And the board decided. Lisa Newsom was gonna be their, uh, the face of the district. I don't know what went behind that. Um, but I know from the last interview. It was like a five minute decision. Like, I don't smoke cigarettes, but uh, the way it was told me. You had enough time to go outside, smoke a cigarette, come back in, sit down, think that you about to have a discussion, and it was a three, two vote that quick. Or four, no, it was a three, one vote and one vote was recanted.
Recanted or abstained?
Uh, I believe it was recanted. I'm gonna recant my vote as what was stated, because it was already done. So. Do you vote for Lisa Newsom? Yes, yes, yes. There's three votes right there. So I got one no. And then I gotta recant. That's why the power of three for the board is so, so important. So I know, to circle it back, I know that. Tim Fleming can be a detriment. Or they may think that Tim Fleming would be a detriment, but I believe that if we're gonna take this district and we're gonna move it in a different direction. We need Tim Fleming. Because Laura Jones was their appointment. Donna Rapous has been with that board already for years, and it's been a four one board forever for the past, since twenty twenty one, when that board came in, it's been pretty much four one. The entire time. All four, and then Tim's standing over here. So he's crying wolf, or is he telling you the truth? He ain't just up here yelling and screaming.
I think that's a good question.
He ain't just yelling and screaming for no reason. There's gotta be something. And again. Tim's loud, Tim don't know how to talk. He's probably mad. But Tim ain't never been called a liar. They just tell him to shut up. And they censor him. And they gavel him. And they adjourn meetings while he's trying to get something out. So again, I don't wanna catch up, but again, when Tim says something. I wanna, I wanna make a motion for this. All we need is a second for me to have a conversation, but they won't even give him that.
Right, alright. So, but I, I wanna get back to why his change of heart as far as endorsing her and now he wants her fired.
I believe his endorsement for her, and I'm speaking out of my thought, not for him.
Right.
Uh, I believe his endorsement for her was, well, she's here already, so if we're gonna put somebody in position, why not her? They went and grabbed this guy from somewhere else and brought him in. Did what they did. So twenty nineteen was the year that, um, we had the first D. And all these years of being F district. And this is also the same time where we had the most diversity in Ashbilla area city schools. And every last one of that, every piece of diversity that we had is now fired. Harvard grads, doctor's degree, they're all gone. They couldn't really fire Dr. Washington, but what they did was they put her on a roof letter. And when you're. A prominent individual in one of those settings, you don't let somebody riff you. You go pick up a new job so that you don't have that fire. On a, on their resume. People, um, of that caliber won't even come to a school district. If the board votes them three, two, because when they go to the next school and they say, well, why did this board vote you three, two? Well, it's not because those two didn't just like you. There was something there. What is it? So Dr. Washington removed herself from the situation, went and found her a new job. Now she's living halfway ever after. Can't blame her. Lisa Newsom on the other hand, uh. I, I don't wanna say anything. Maybe she's sweating, maybe she's nervous, I don't know. Um, it ultimately depends what happens at the. This election.
I know, but I'm still just curious why, like, he endorsed her, but like, maybe because she was there, but.
I mean, like, she's here, she's somebody that we know.
Right.
We're not bringing out an outside source.
Right, but I'm, I'm just curious why now he's, wants her removed.
Because it might have a thing to do with. Her being told no seven times. Because when he initially endorsed her, this is before. There was even like a process of, these are our candidates. When Tim endorsed Lisa Newsom, to my knowledge. That was the only person that they were looking at. And then like I said, they hired that Rubisic guy. And then he walks in and then Tim met him. So at this point, they hired him. Welcome to the team.
The board.
Have you, yeah.
How did the board do that without him there?
Cause it's not, it's not nothing new.
Right, so how many is a quorum? What do they need for a quorum?
I believe it's three.
Three? And how many were there? Was it four? Four?
Don't, don't, I don't, I don't know the exact. I don't know the exact, so don't let me tell you a lot. Um, I know, again, he was hired. And then Tim met him. The first time Tim met him, that guy already had the job. So. At that point, once you get him into the job. Now we can start this process of who we're actually gonna look at.
Right.
For the superintendent, cause he's just interim. Whatever he's doing here, he's here till June, and then once he's, once July rolls around, the new person takes over. Now you have an opportunity to look at these candidates. And that might've been where the change of heart came in, because now we have. Seven other people from a different, uh, bringing something other than just what she had, that I can look at and say, hmm, well, why not the superintendent? We already hired her for that. Um, well, what about these other six individuals? And okay, we've seen that application. Why, why, a letter got her back into the race, so. I, I think that's where the disconnect came from. Um, the difference of. That's the only person that we have to never mind you hired him, and now I have these individuals to look at. And seeing a better option here. And I believe he thought, thought he found his better option, which was Dr. Washington, but they ripped her.
Okay, so his thing is, sh- his, so what it sounds like to me, obviously you can't speak for him.
Of course.
You're just based off of your observations. He. Found a, he thought there was a better candidate. He thought there was a better choice. Um, but I mean, she was voted in. She.
By everyone but him.
I mean, four to one that she still wins the majority vote, so she's, she gets in.
But four one is.
I mean, he can, and, and this is, it's his right as a board member to, to bring up the motion to have her removed from the board, or from, from her position. Right, so I, he can do it all the time, for all I'm concerned. Um. But I, I, I just, so, but she's already moved, Dr. Washington's already moved on.
Of course.
Right? So does he have somebody else in mind that would take?
I can't speak for that.
Newsom's place.
Can't speak for that, but, um, we had that process. You know what I mean? Um, and we had. Me being under the pressure, we had eligible candidates, even outside of Dr. Washington, um, who would've been ready and willing to take the job. But the thing with that as well is. A superintendent needs to know that that board's gonna be behind them before they make that agreement. Um, so we gotta make sure we have a unified board and. This election can be. This election will be pretty big, because. Yeah, we think we can make a change and we want to. But, um, I think that if we don't have the opportunity, opportunity to, this school districts are just gonna stay the same. Um, if there's no Tim Fleming, I think Lisa Newsom has very strong job security. I don't think that they'll just openly fire her, because that was their pick.
What is he not allowed to talk about?
I wish I could tell you. Um, I don't, speaking out against her, um, telling, talking about her, uh.
And these are, like, these are judges' orders, that he's not allowed to talk about it, or what?
Maybe lawyer. Uh, so I don't, I don't, don't.
Yeah, but a lawyer doesn't make the final decision.
Don't put me into the whole, you know, don't put me into like that legality thing, cause I don't wanna say something and just be completely off, off balance about it. I think it's more like a, these letters are getting sent from the lawyer, um, if you continue to do this unpressing charges type deal. But then.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't even know. So are these, are these letters public? Are these cease and desist letters public?
I do not know that. I do not know that.
I think that would be, uh, I think, to me, that's a great question, because I would love to see them.
I know that Tim brings it up. I don't think Tim has an issue making it public, because he says it at the board meeting.
Has that?
I received another cease and desist letter.
And has anybody, has anybody called him out on it? He said, show us, or?
No, no, not, not to my knowledge anyway. But the one thing that I wanna put out there is, I just wanna put it like this. Here's the board, here's the superintendent. So if I'm the store manager at wherever, and the employee is telling me. You're not, uh, my bad. Uh, if I'm the store manager and the employee is telling, is telling me, you're not allowed to tell me what to do. That right there shows the lack of discipline and structure that is in that district in the first place. Because it just continues to further on that. Now, when the teacher is telling the kids, hey, stop doing that, sit down. You can't tell me that. When I was teaching at the high school, I was standing in be- in between classes. My old subs, or my old, uh, social studies teachers right here, my old math teachers right here. And I don't remember that teacher, but he taught there when I was there, right? This little girl walks in between us, this is at the high school. Great. Now I'm be late at the art. She lets the word out, the teachers. And I'm like, yo, what? That's what we doing? You're just like, she didn't say it to you. Are you for real?
So maybe cut teacher pay until they start incorporating some discipline?
I think that's fair.
I won't, I, I won't, I won't put it on the teacher, because.
Why can't you not put that on the teacher?
Because when I was at the junior high. Four kids. If y'all leave this class, don't come back. Go to the office, go to S M R, or whatever y'all do. If y'all walk out that door, I'm not giving you permission to leave. Don't come back. Go to the office. Soon as I'm not looking, what do they do? They leave. Okay. They come back. Where'd y'all go? Oh, we went to, but he said we can't stay there. What'd I tell you? Don't come back. Go to the office, figure it out. Four minutes later, secretary brings some kids back. What are they doing? All four of those kids just walked out of here after I told them expressly not to leave. And then they left. I told them that they weren't okay to come back here to go to the office. Then I sent them down there. And the secretary tells me. No, I'm not a babysitter. She turned around, looked at the kids, y'all go sit down. So when we say the teachers need support.
Pay of the administration?
Things like that. That guy that offered me the full-time job as that seventh grade teacher, yeah, whatever you do, I just can't afford to fail him, so. If they, if they don't do their work, just give them a D. If my daughter's failing, fail her. I'm a good proponent of that. Cause if I'm failing, you gotta fail me. If I'm failing, I'm.
So somebody brought up a motion to cut the pay of the administration. You wouldn't be opposed to it?
I don't know if I'd be up to like cut the administration. I think I would be more of a proponent of going into it and looking at it like this. This is what we doing now. Um, this is what we're gonna expect. And if you don't wanna rock with that. Let us know. And if we gotta find somebody to take your spot, because you don't wanna, uh, hold yourself to a level of. I don't know what the word is, but if you don't wanna hold yourself to a high level, um, and make sure that these kids are getting a decent education. Go teach somewhere else.
Yeah, but then you put a burden on the, the other teachers or the rest of the school, if you cut a teacher without a replacement, right? So, and then, and then you do a disservice to the students whenever there, you have a, a substitute.
There, there, there has to be a shakeup. Um, and I think the maj-. I think we have a lot of good teachers, so I don't think it's gonna be a thing of going in and just firing teachers willy nilly. I think it's gonna be a thing of going in there and getting them teacher support. So if, again, when little kids are walking through the hallway acting like that. We can get these kids to where they need to be and we can get them taken care of. Not necessarily just suspended in and putting them in detention and whatever. But the minute, just like, just get them somewhere. So you can't come in here talking like that.
Right, but the administration is the support, right?
Should, it, I would say it should be.
Yeah, but I mean, if the administration isn't providing the support, then. Cut administration, cut pay, something. Find somebody who's willing to do it.
Yeah, this is what we're expecting. Um, that, you ever seen Lean on Me?
I can't say I've seen it.
So Morgan Freeman, when he first gets there, he's like, alright, you've been a football coach for ten years, you ain't never won a game. Yo, assistant coach is now, the, the assistant coach is now a head coach. And that's how we gonna do it. If you don't like it. See about you. Y'all been failing in these math classes the past twenty years. I'm gonna give you like to, to you like this. If you can't show me that these kids are going from Ds to Cs within the next three months, we gonna have to talk about it. And if it's just write-ups and then doing like, if we gotta put, if we gotta put this, the whole school on a poor, performance improvement plan, then whatever. Not in it for anybody's job, but it's a failing district, something needs to be done somewhere, so we can start seeing an upward trend. And if you start. I'll come in, and if I gotta come substitute, I can't substitute while on the board. But what, like what? That's, that's why you run for the board. So that way you can get all this information, you can figure out what's going on. You can give the teachers the open access to the board and let the teachers tell you, what do, this is what I need, so I can be successful with my job. And then we, as a board, can take the resources that we have, invest those resources, get these teachers the things they need. And we can start to see a trend of things starting to go upwards. But until then. We, we, that's why we gotta get out there and vote. Cause that, that, take it back, that's why I say. We either need to change this board, the out, the face of this board, so that way we can make those moves, or I don't think those moves are ever gonna be made. Because in the past a hundred years, they haven't been made. They just continue to.
Yeah, I'm just, that's why I asked you the question earlier, what? What resolutions have been passed in the past, aside, you know, that you necessarily didn't agree with? I know you mentioned the one point five GPA to play sports, which I, I don't think, I don't agree with that either. I mean. You should be able to at least have an, uh, average of a C.
Can't get a C.
If you can't, if you're, if you're, I, I think if you're not doing better than half of. You know, half of what you're expected.
I feel like you can show, you can show up to school, uh, give forty-five percent of your effort and get a C.
Yeah.
My biggest thing is, if you can't maintain a C average, how can I as a coach trust you to know what gap to hit? How do, how can I trust you as a coach to be a point guard and initiate my offense?
So again.
How can I trust you as a baseball player to know whether to throw the fast or curve or a slider?
And that goes into reasons why certain schools won't take our seniors. Because they're not gonna let you graduate with their diploma, when you've been over here getting that mess for all these years. Um. We need to get into these schools and engage these kids. So these kids engage into their education. If you love them kids up. Kids will start to get it. When them students that never wanted to open a book and read, and I finally got them to open book and read, and then not only get them to. Open the book, read it, take the information, and then put it in their own words. You just gotta reach them. You gotta go in there, you gotta let them kids up. Some of them are gonna be a pain in the butt. But if you get some pair of pros in them classrooms, you get them teachers some help.
Is there, um. Is there a place where, you know, people can go and check what was on board minutes? Um, what was brought to a vote, how the vote ended?
You should be able to find it on the school, on the school website.
The school website?
I believe it's A A C S dot, uh, org. But this is how funny our board is, like. Even.
This isn't.
That is hundred percent not it. It might be Ashbilla, I don't know. Even like printing out the minutes at the board for the. Participants that come to the board, like even that is a stretch. And, uh, just passing the information out so that way, um.
Board of Education?
People that are there can see it.
Agenda and minutes. Let's see. I just wanna see board meetings, policies.
As we're doing this, um, if you wanna stay real informed, this is how this happens. Um, watch the election. And no matter who's, who's elected after the election. The November, the December board meetings are gonna be very important. Because what generally. Looks to happen is, is when you'll force in those last minute. Okay, I don't know if we're gonna be able to do this next year. Well, here, let me force in right now, kind of things, them, uh, the last minute funding thing. So everything from this meeting. To my knowledge, should be pushed back to next month, because. Yeah, seven minutes, seven minutes.
So I'm just looking here. So this is from the eighteenth, I believe. This is the one that they shut down.
Yeah.
So. Code order. So, call to order. So this should tell us what was on the agenda. Right? Superintendent report, where?
So that right, that right there, um, the nine four, those would be like the things that there'll be, uh.
A Japan field trip?
Yeah, those would be like the things that they'll be looking at and then the things that they'll vote on. So like, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna go over points nine through nine, ten. Uh, call the roll so we can take the vote. No, no. Not when our schools at where it's at. Like, I don't, I don't understand how you even get past that. I feel like everything that's up there should be looked at. If we got four field trips, alright, yeah, group that together.
So vote to approve a sponsorship, Washington DC field trip. Uh, Luma service agreement for speech services, resolution authorizing, let me zoom in a little bit. This is a little hard to see. Uh, contract to Colin Equipment Company as presented, um. Does anybody know what that is? Equipment company? Commercial line extension. Uh, gas company for the transportation facility. Is that for the new transportation facility? Okay, to approve service contract E S C for school psychologist services. Japan field trip. Now that sounds pretty friggin' fun. Uh, I would say yes to that more than likely. Uh, recommendation approved, emergency.
They've approved that numerous times. Cuz I've heard that at board meetings before, the Japan field trip.
The Collins Equipment Company, um, is a petroleum company, so I am assuming that that's for the, um, fuel station for the bus garage.
I wanna see, so where does the uh public comments come in?
That's the very last thing.
Uh, last thing, I saw public participation, that was. Say, uh, maximum fifteen minutes of public participation is permitted. Each person is allotted three minutes. So really, you can only have five people speak.
And they'll fit on the clock for you too. But depending on who it is, so, um, there was one meeting where, uh.
No person showed up.
Somebody was up there talking and then at two minutes and fifty seven seconds they're ready to shut them down, but then there'll be other people that'll talk, well, it'd be. Three and a half, four minutes, five minutes in. And then depending on what the situation is like. I don't know, man, like, this, this, this board, like. This ain't it. If you're friends with them.
Would you make a motion to change this, this rule right here with the fifteen minute maximum?
Yeah, like, why, why is that even?
And any person can make that motion, correct?
So I don't believe that. And so any motion on the, any person on the board?
Any person on the board can make that motion? Okay. And then it would. And then if anybody seconds it, then it may go to a vote. It would become a conversation and then it would come to a vote.
So I would say like, yeah, we can do like, i- and I get like, yeah, why you wanna quote unquote cap it? Uh, hold on real quick, let me read that. All statements shall be directed to the board president. No person may address or question. The board will not answer any questions. So like, that's one thing where it kills me. It's like, okay, so like. Then what are you here for? Why am I doing public participation? I feel like if it's public participation. I think.
The board should interact.
I disagree. I think the board is there to hear, hear people's concerns. I don't necess- think they're necessarily there to immediately address that. If somebody wants to uh make a motion, I think that's fair.
So I'll give you this. Um, certain situations, um, it might be a, let me research that. Not when it's a, a common trend. So. When it comes to the per, the public participation. I haven't been to every board meeting since twenty twenty one, uh, but I've been to a good majority of them. And it's very rare when you hear someone come back out after public participation and then address those concerns. So even if you're not gonna say anything today, um, can I, can you? Email me, let me know next month. Tell me something. Don't just let me come up here, address my concern, and then it go by the wayside. And then that's what I see and that's what I believe is happening with the board right now. So come up here, tell me it's wrong, and I'm just gonna sit here and look at you like this. Thank you very much. Is there anything else? Can you call the roll? And then they go home. No, no, I'm not alright with that. Because if I have an issue with the school and, um, just pertaining to my daughter and I come tell you like, hey. I'm saying this. It, it doesn't have to just be discipline, but I'm saying this. Um, can I, can I get an answer about it? I'm expecting an answer. I ain't just come up here and tell you about this for no reason. Or come to a board meeting, uh, cut my workday short and then be there for a grand total of seven minutes. I could've showed one more house. That feeds my baby. But no, I cut my last showing and then I came to this meeting and then you closed it seven minutes later because you don't like how somebody else talk. So then what does that say to the community? Mess whatever the guy that, mess whatever he's saying that made you shut the meeting down in the first place. Everybody that's sitting out there in the stands, what does that say about you? Because I don't like what he's saying. I might just go ahead and shut this meeting down and I'm going home. No, I'm, 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 I'm not with that. I'm not with that.
No, definitely understandable. Just trying to look here and see if there's any, uh. Download the agenda, print the agenda. Oh, it's all view printer download. Okay. I was just seeing if there was anything else on there that I. I found interesting. I'm just curious how they have this all separated and why it is the way it is, but. Uh, yeah, so just, uh, I just wanna real quick look at the last meeting. Call to order, nothing happened. Nothing happened.
What date is that?
Or September twentieth of twenty three.
There was, uh, work, some board meeting agenda review, I guess.
September twentieth, I wanna say that was the last one. That was in the library.
That's.
Cuz this past one was in a large group construction.
Let's see, uh, maybe.
Even that meeting was real funny.
Maybe this is what I'm looking for.
Meeting was real funny because, um, he calls for that lady's job, but she has like a legitimate fan club. Um, and I don't say that to be like disrespectful, like people really do like her. Uh, and they come to her defense.
So respond to public comments. Uh, that's from the August sixteenth meeting. This is, this is the actual meeting minutes for that day in the agenda. Um, so respond, so it looks like they have it in there that they should be responding to public comments from the prior.
That, that might be the one where I remember, remember them doing it. And even it was short.
And that, yeah, that was a, that looks like there was only one thing. Oh, wait, here we got a couple of things.
Um, so that, that, that's, uh, that should be new business. That's all business. Those are all things that we're voting on. Those are all things that, uh, individ- individually. Are we saying yes to this or are we saying no to this? Now, a lot of it ends up being important and you're gonna end up saying yes to it anyway. But, um, I just, it, it doesn't sit right with me at that, at, at, at the cer- current, uh, state that they're in, that anything can be put together. And then just approved.
So how do we find out? How do we find out who voted what? Yea or nay? Is there a way to do that?
Go to six point zero one, August twenty twenty three, meeting minutes dot P D F. Scroll down.
Yeah, I would say thi- this should give us to it where it's here because, uh.
Uh, look, we can find a lot about this. Uh, so here, I mean, if you were talking about doing your research, this is, this is the research you should be doing. Mister Fleming is concerned about Miss Jones' comments in the July minutes, uh, about the board not micromanaging. He further stated, Miss. Jones has sued the school district, her, and her aunt, who is employed by the district. Uh, was given a raise. Mister Fleming further indicated that Miss Jones called out the Ohio Department of Education and interfere with superintendent reference checks.
Oh, yeah, right there, see? Motion was made by Rapus and then seconded by Barrickman.
Uh, here we have the yays. And the nays. Uh, this is interesting. I'm gonna put this link, uh, if anybody's still here, uh, watching with us, I'm gonna put this link to, um. To these minutes and agendas in the description, so make sure you check those out. Do your own research, um, make your own decision. Don't listen to any of us.
Yeah, I don't know what I'm talking about. Been kinda listening since twenty twenty one. I can keep my ear to the ground.
Yeah, but I mean, yeah, I, I, I like to see firsthand sources, primary sources, so, um, definitely check these out if you're not.
Right there. I see Sam Torres' name. What's that? Scroll down one more time. One more time.
Uh, public participation, Boardman is about the discussion of the meeting, stated that he is concerned if meetings times were moved to ten AM. So, uh, yeah, but this, this, the, the whole motion was made. I mean, this has been brought up several times, but this motion was made, I think, in January, March, at one of those meetings. Um. What else are we looking at?
I was at that meeting, so that, that was that last one that was in the, um.
This motion continues to fail. He's not given courtesy of any board discussion.
In the last, one in the, uh, library and that meeting. You gotta go to these board meetings. This, this paperwork right here says one thing, but you really have to see what is going on in these board meetings. It's worth the hour investment, um, once a month to go see like what these people are doing because like ultimately, these are, these are our kids. So like regardless of whatever all this stuff says, like these are our kids. Um, and we sat here, we talked about all the issues and everything like that, but we can scroll through this list and none of that. None of those issues that like we're concerned about are in this. Who makes the minutes? The board. So, uh, board president. Vice president, um, the treasurer, I believe all these, and superintendent, they all come together and put this stuff together, these minutes together. So these are the things that we need to go over at the next board meeting, so that way we can get this stuff out to the public, so that way the public can know what's going on.
Right. Interesting. Yeah, I'm definitely gonna put that link in the description so everybody can check that out because I think it's, uh. I think it's important to see, even if it's not the full story, um, it's definitely a pretty good.
No, yeah, that, that gives, that gives you, that gives. That gives you a good amount. Anything else is usually just like the theatrics that happen when things start happening. But, uh, it, it, it needs to happen, um, and I'm glad it's happening, uh, because I don't really see. I don't see a board that changes things other than the way. I'm kinda hoping it goes because you need to vote.
Right.
You, 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 you need, you, you need to vote. When I ran in twenty twenty one, Nimi, Seifer, Barrickman ran together. They all got elected. So when they all got elected, that, there it is. Whoever else is up there, um.
Doesn't really matter cuz that third, that three agenda.
Three, two. Three, two.
Every time.
Thirty two.
So what you're hoping by?
If it's four, one, doesn't really matter, uh.
And you, Sammy.
So, so we, we're looking at it like this. Um, and hopefully they would be okay with following this. Um, I ain't got no political, I don't got no political gain in this whatsoever. Um, I don't have any relationships at that school that I need to maintain. I haven't been here for thirty years of relationships of, don't worry, I'll get you back or anything like that. I ain't got none of that. All I know that I have in it is a dad who wants the best educational path for his daughter. Um, so I'm coming in with this sense that, okay, this is jacked up. I may not know everything. But let me reach out and utilize some resources and figure out what we need to do to get this ship headed in the right direction. And I don't, Nimi already said on Facebook that me and Sammy can go to H E double hockey sticks along with Tim Fleming. So if I got elected and it was just me and nobody else, I'm already coming into a hostile environment cuz the board president don't wanting to do, don't want nothing to do with me. And I don't know why that is cuz I could show you text messages in my phone from him telling me, hey, I heard you put petitions. And you are gonna be running for school board. If there's anything I can do for you, let me know. I'd be glad to help. And I think I can help support you getting in the, getting a seat. Yeah, that's a text message that he sent me. Um, but then for some reason, once upon a time, he decided. I'm not his guy no more. It's probably cuz I never met with him. I don't think me and him have very much to talk about in a situation where. He's helping me with the campaign. Um, a lot of that makes me uncomfortable. Um, that might just be a me thing. I might've missed out on a blessing from, uh, not meeting with him. I don't think that I did. Um, cuz I see what I got from not meeting with him. You don't wanna meet with me? Go ahead. Go on about your day. Okay, bye. Um. So if I go up there and it's just me, I'm on the four, one board. And I ain't even do nothing yet. You, you ain't even hurt my ideas. You don't even know what I wanna do. I might like some of the stuff that you have to say. But now I'm walking into it where, wow, that's what I'm being welcomed into? So if I'm getting that treatment. And I'm not on the board and I think differently from him, I'm blocked on his Facebook, I can't find him. Um, but these are the things that he's saying. That's our board president. I don't think that me and Sammy could get up there, uh, with the current board and be able to make a change because it's still just the two of us. Now it's a three, two board. Now we'd be able to make change that way because we could just be bullheaded and try and stop anything that they do. Hopefully we can get some good to come out of that and force a thing where, listen, we need to get this passed. Okay, well, if you need to get this passed, well, we're gonna have to do some sitting down and talk about some stuff. Cuz the only way we're gonna pass anything is if we doing right about these kids. What are we doing about these IPs? And what are we doing? What are we doing to get our graduations number higher outside of just doing like that credit repair where you can? Where you cannot come to school from your freshman year until your senior year, three months before graduation and then graduate with full credits. What are we doing? Like, the, these, these can't be the answers. Like, that can't be it. So you send that kid who skipped from ninth to the end of senior year out into the real world with a diploma. What did you really give him? And what is he taking with that diploma? I think a lot of that diploma, outside of like what you learn, might just show you how to be an adult. Might just prepare you for the real world. Might just get you used to having a responsibility that you have to be. Ready for on a day to day basis. I don't think doing things like that is gonna do it. Um, the elementary. The, uh, the Erie and everything like that. All the names of the Coneyo prisons. So you force these kids, you put these kids into a school, uh, and this opens up a whole new conversation, but you put these kids into a school. You push them through.
You're saying the names of the.
Yeah, Erie, Huron, all that good jazz. The same thing in Coneyo prison.
Yeah, but they're also lakes.
Yeah, call it what you want, but there's.
I didn't, I would, if you didn't tell me that, I would've never known that.
And you usually wouldn't think about it until, uh. My dad's at Huron too. You know what I mean? He's not at the same Huron. You know what I mean?
I think that's an unfair assessment to make.
That is a very unfair assessment. It can be seen as unfair, but it's, 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 it's a little thing. It's a little thing. Where he was in Huron when he was a kid and then he dropped out of high school and then he got a diploma and now he's in Huron again. What do we do for that kid? You know what I mean? When, when do we go back to try and reach that kid and pull him back in? Like, nah, Bill, that ain't it. We need people in the district that will go find these kids, love them up. Show them like there's more than one way to get through life than outside of just like what you see from. Scarface and all the movies and TVs and stuff like that. Like, some, somebody's gotta reach back to the community. And I think there's a good group of. Young individuals that are ready to do so, um, because they care about the community that they came from. The school board is like the backbone. Of what we got going on as far as our community. They started in the schools. To graduate, whatever happens from there, hopefully it's a responsible adult building something for themselves. You know what I mean? But if this is how we get our kids through, they start off in Huron, they end off in Huron. And this is, it's a small, it's a tough assessment to say. It's, it's, I don't like saying it, but, um. That correlation is there. You know what I mean? He didn't teach me anything when he was young. And it's not just the schools, schools' job to get that done. That's, that's a full time job for everybody. It takes a village. I can't raise my daughter by myself. I need her grandparents. And I need the aunts and uncles too. I'm gonna need the teachers. I need the teachers that she has now. Can't teach her everything on my own.
Fair, absolutely.
Can't, we can't just let the ones. That aren't blessed enough fall by the wayside.
I agree. One thing I would say for you, I know you said you're not political. You better get political.
So when. I won't say I'm not political. I'll say I'm not a politician. That might be saying the same thing. Cuz I get the political. The political things that have to be done. I gotta get out in front of people. I gotta go to the meet candidates.
You gotta get dirty. You gotta get dirty.
But I don't wanna get, I don't wanna get into a thing of slinging mud.
Alright, so but, alright, so here's my thing real fast. Um. You gotta get dirty because people are, and I'm not saying stoop to their level, but people are gonna throw dirt. People are gonna throw mud on you, right? And, and if, if you just sit back and just kinda let people say what they're gonna say, especially when you're running for a, a public position. The public view is what matters.
Very true.
Regardless, regardless of what your, your, your policies are, your stances are, your public perception is what makes the most difference. Because if people think that you're a shitbag, people are not going to be as attracted to you as if, uh, you kinda present yourself. I'm not saying you present yourself as a shitbag, but if people are throwing dirt on your name, calling you a shitbag basically. And people will get wind of that. It's gonna, whoever's throwing that, that mud, is gonna kinda like put themselves a little bit, a little bit higher than you in, in some people's eyes. Right?
Yeah.
So you gotta be able to make sure that you can get dirty and play the game as well.
So I feel like.
And it doesn't have to get personal.
So like, when it comes to like the getting dirty part, I, I kinda look at it like this. There's a lot of things that I feel like I know, I don't know everything, and I don't have all the answers, but um. If I don't gain anything out of this, I know I can walk away from it with at the very least eight hundred people knowing that. Since twenty twenty one to twenty twenty three. This is all the things that I've seen, um, these are the things that I know. And if you. Want to be involved now is more of a time than ever to do that. Um, so when it comes to getting dirty, I expect there to be mud thrown, and I expect things to be said. Good, bad, and ugly, uh, mainly because. What we're trying to do right now. Has never been done. Um, the people that were. I don't wanna say doing this to or going against, cause I don't wanna make it a, us versus them, but um. The seat we're trying to take. Has been being sat in by the same person for a very long time. So. Them getting to this point where. I have to attack you, I have to assassinate your character, I got it.
No, 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 I'm not saying that.
I, 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 I got you, uh, and I think we're going to the same place, uh, but them getting into this place where they feel like, I gotta, I gotta start letting people know that. Nah, Darius and Tim, they can go, or Sammy and Tim, they can go to uh, they can go to HEO, uh, with Tim. I feel like they gotta do that, because. No one's ever did this. No one's ever came up to them and was like, nah, nah, big homie, I need that chain from you. And since someone's trying to take their chain, now all of a sudden. You ain't taking that, well, it's, bril- in this situation, you can't fight me, you know what I mean? You can't put your hands on me, and this not being a thing anymore, this is gonna be a thing where. I'm gonna tell you what I know, and I'm gonna tell you how I believe I can help make a difference. I can't do this by myself, um, and this is a thing where the powers three is very real. I seen it in my last election, and I watched what happened, and I'm seeing the fruits of it. So if. We're gonna take this fight, I expect to get, I expect to get hit. But I can hit you back without necessarily hitting you, right? Uh, and I. Uh, I'm okay with that. Just keep weaving it through, uh, because I put that video out, and then a board member approached me about it. Why did you say that? Because that was the information I was given. It's not true. Are you sure? Yes. Are you sure? Yeah. Okay, I apologize, I was wrong. They asked the same question again, no, I wasn't. I don't know if this is public record, but it should be. Uh, find out where your board members came from. Where they were, what they were doing before they were appointed. Because what I said in my video, I was wrong, so I was told. Um, outside sources tell me I'm not wrong, but since that individual told me I was wrong, I won't repeat it. Um, just had to admit to respect, watch my video, it's about twenty minutes long, skip to about uh, fifteen minutes, and then you'll hear me break down the. The candidacy and what this board looks like, and where everyone, who everyone is, and what I know they were doing before they got here. So. I was approached about it, and then that same day, the superintendent approached me as well. But never said anything, just kinda came up to me. I looked over and she was standing, oh, hi, how are you? She stuck her hand out, I shook it, and she just walked away. So. Whatever we're doing. It's working. Um, and I, I. I get the political game of getting dirty and. They said this about me, wow, she's this. It's all public information. It's all, the treasurer's report is public information, you, but if you can find, if you can find the treasurer's report, you should put that link in there too. And then that'll really break down like, what's going on with the school's money?
Well, look it up, well, look it up, I'm sure it's probably on here somewhere, I will find it, if I can find it, I'll put it on there.
Yeah, if you, if you can find that, yeah, that, that's one to look at.
Tom, do you have anything?
I'm good.
So, yeah, I just figured, I'd ask, you've been pretty quiet, so I just wanted to ask. Uh, one other question before we wrap it up, because we're about two hours in, and uh, I know Tom's probably gonna go to. So. Have you? Sam and Tim sat down and talked about the things that um. You disagree with as far as the way the board's been going?
Okay, wait a minute, um, as far as what the board's been going?
The way it's been going, like, maybe some of the things they've passed, maybe um.
So, so.
Maybe some of the resolutions or.
And this is the second time you said resolution, so let me touch that one, uh, I think it's tough, uh, to really just like pick out. What they're doing, because I think a lot of it is what they're not. IPs, it's something that never comes up on. An agenda. So I think it's more of like what they're not doing, what they're not addressing.
So have you guys sat down and talked about that?
We've talked about it, uh, I think it's gonna be another thing where. We gotta, we gotta come in, and we gotta look at this information, and like, really.
And the only reason I ask is because.
On what I'd like or don't like without having a pool.
Right, but here's my, so you guys are kinda running as like a team, basically. Who's to say you guys are even on the same page?
Well, I think we've, uh, we've already shown so much that we are.
But I'm saying as far as the agenda, and, and the way that things are gonna be voting, and, and your vision for the way that everything's gonna be ran.
Comes with that as well is, even if we don't agree. I think we're all mature enough that we can uh, sit there and have a conversation and figure out how we can put our differences aside. And work through that, and what I don't see now is the, a board that has that, where even if I don't like what he's saying. I'll sit here and I'll listen to what he's saying, so I can figure out what it is, because in. I don't think we should be doing that. There might be something in there where you be like. He might be right. But for us to get to, he might be right, we gotta be able to have a conversation, and that's what they don't do. Hire somebody, and the full board doesn't have, even, doesn't even have a, you know, an answer on it.
But if there's a consensus or nobody seconds it, I mean, whose fault is that? I mean, they can't, it's nobody's fault.
Well, it, it's, it's not, it's not so much of a fault thing. Because we're all up here doing a collective job, and whether I like what you're saying or not, I owe you respect to that, why are you saying that? A second doesn't mean that's it. That second doesn't mean.
It means there's gonna, there should be a conversation.
Just means there's a conversation. So if he's an elected official, just as you're an elected official, why are you censoring this man from being able to speak his piece? That's why he says these things, Tim didn't just get here, Tim wasn't always, Tim didn't always go to these meetings yelling and screaming, and I don't even wanna call him and yell him and scream, and I think Tim. Cares about this, and he's been doing this thing for twenty three years, he started off. This whole thing protesting the schools from the things that they were doing. In the district, so like, this is something. Tim didn't just wake up yesterday and say, this ain't right, I'm fighting it. It's been a beast that he's been fighting, you know what I mean, and I think now. We all have opportunity to be able to come together. Stop the same old thing that's been happening, and turn the school in a di- different direction. Cause again, the same family's been holding this thing since Harbor and Ashtria Bula, and. No progress in the schools, but. Ten thousand dollars. She got appointed. Her cousin got the job as a superintendent, and her auntie's the head of HR.
Who's her?
Laura Jones. Those are all facts, so I mean. What's important here? That's the same person that wrote that letter, I think you should rethink about her application, and then you seen in, in there.
Is that letter public?
I do not know.
I think if it went to the board, it should be.
I believe it should be too.
So, we'll see.
But that, that be, again, becomes a thing where there's no transparency, how am I going out and asking for this information? But the board is hushing it.
It's known, like, it's open, it's open that she's the one who wrote it? Or is it assumed, or presumed?
I believe it's openly no.
It's open, okay, we'll find out, because we have Laura Jones next week on here, Darius, thank you so much for uh, joining us, we do gotta cut it out, we've been here two hours now, so. Thank you so much for joining us, uh, I wish you, I'm sure Tom does as well.
Oh, absolutely.
Wish you the best of luck on your campaign, man. Yes, I, I think this is an important conversation, and we're glad to have it, uh, with somebody who's, you know, in the front lines, so. Awesome, thank you again, thank you guys so much for watching, if you made it this far, don't forget to give us a like and a subscribe, share this with somebody who needs to be informed. As far as local politics and their local school board, um, we'll see you on the next one, peace.